Well, thank you, everyone, for joining our Hispanic Heritage Month Town Hall this evening. I want to thank, give a special thanks to Sandra Lopez for the, all the work she put into not just this event, but her efforts to continue to make sure that council is engaged with Hispanic community in Columbus. You know, typically during Hispanic Heritage Month, we gather in council chambers. We move aside the desk and we replace it with a long dinner table. We invite community members, many of whom have participated in those dinners from across the city, to come eat in the people's house. Obviously, it's not a good idea to have 25 folks eating together inside City Hall right now. So instead, we're taking time this evening to hear from members of our Latinx community. We know that COVID-19 has hit all communities hard, but not, but no community has been harder hit than our brothers and sisters in the Hispanic community. We're going to hear from leaders in our city about what they're seeing across sectors. And first, we'll hear from Edward Johnson, who's the Policy Director at Columbus Public Health, about public health trends. Second, we're going to hear from our President Pro Tem, Elizabeth Brown, who will tell us about a new program available for residents who have missed work due to COVID. Then we'll chat with Officer Samuel James and Sergeant Chris Smith Hughes about public safety. Nathan Thornhill from Northland High School will provide an overview of Hispanic Heritage Month and talk about how important it is for our city. Director Liliana Kavano from the Ohio Latino Affairs Commission will talk about what she's seeing and hearing about the state of Latinos in central Ohio. Director Rose from Proyecto...
Mari Posa?
There you go. I appreciate you, Sandra. And Michael Basamante from Ohio State will talk about how Latino youth students are doing in Columbus. We'll hear about small business owners, how our small business owners are faring, from Claudia De Leon, Board President of the Hispanic Chamber. And finally, School Board Member Ramona Reyes and Program Director of our Lady of Guadalupe will talk about a new partnership with Columbus called Right to Recover and how folks can learn more. And it might even be worth, if that's the specific convo, President Pro Tem bringing her in on your convo, if you'd like, but certainly we'll follow your lead. With me this evening are my colleagues, Councilmember Shayla Favor, Manuel Remy, Elizabeth Brown, and Councilmember Dorance should be joining us. They'll be asking questions with me along the way to make this a robust dialogue. I'd like to give them both an opportunity to make open remarks, starting with Remy then Favor. And if Dorance is able to jump on, and then we will go to President Pro Tem. So thank you both, so thank you all, and so we'll go ahead and get started. So first, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Remy and Favor, then Dorance, and then President Pro Tem. Remy is doing that thing again today. I'm so appreciative that it used to be me that would do that. You're, you're... People are doing it. It's really good. I've been sick all week and I need this. Don't stop talking. How about we go to Councilmember Favor?
So that was quite the introduction. If you are not awake yet, you know, good evening. So to everyone who doesn't know me, my name is Shayla Favor and I serve as the Chair of Housing, Public Service and Transportation, and Criminal Justice and Judiciary. And when I think about some of the subject matter that really hits home for our communities of color, they definitely fall within those three categories. So I am, I'm encouraged that we can all convene this evening to have candid conversation about those issues that matter most to our Latinx community, our brothers and sisters. This has been a tough year, without a shadow of a doubt, from COVID-19 and to protesting in the street against police brutality. But one thing I know for sure is that when we come together as brothers and sisters of the greater Columbus community, we are stronger together. We fight for one another. We listen to each other. I myself am really longing for some of the good food we shared last year in council chambers. You know, but I'll just recreate it tonight for Taco Wednesday. But, you know, once again, it's just grateful, once again, to be with you all here today. We cannot take these days for granted. And I'm just grateful that I'm here to serve you all and can just bring greetings this evening. So happy Heritage Month, and I hope it has been a pleasant and memorable one, I'm sure.
Well, good evening, everyone. Great to be with you all this evening and certainly happy Heritage Month. Month. It's, it's great to be at any event in which we're celebrating the diversity that is Columbus. It's one of the things that makes us such a vibrant and strong community, even in times that we're dealing with today. So I won't belabor the point because I know there's a lot of good information discussions we had this evening, but, you know, missed the opportunity to be at Festival Latino with everyone this summer and certainly glad that we've got such great, strong community leaders in this community at a time right now that we desperately need, you know, leadership in every part of our city. And certainly proud of the folks on this call, the leadership that you've shown to help serve your community in some of the toughest times that we as a city has had. So certainly, thanks for being here and certainly looking forward to the conversation. I think with that, I'm turning the mic over to President Pro Tem Brown.
Great. I will be brief because I know you're going to hear from me after Edward Johnson's update from Columbus Public Health, but I just want to say that I'm so grateful to be here with my colleagues on this call and on this video chat and grateful to be with all of you. And just one of the best things about being an elected official is being in community with others. And that is something we're all deeply missing. I won't speak for my colleagues, but I've heard them say it and I feel it. And so these opportunities to at least create a version of that are really special. Again, missing the food. I will not even be attempting to cook food in my own kitchen that rises to the level because I would fail. But I do want to say too that I've appreciated so much Sandra Lopez's work in her years with council and all of the work that I've been able to do with our Latino community here over the years, from our, from being at Festival Latino to, you know, our work to honor Hispanic Heritage Month, to the creation of the Columbus Families Together Fund three years ago now, which provides representation to undocumented immigrants who are currently detained to help them be with their families and keep them in this country and know their rights to make their legal case to do so. So I'm really glad to be here and with all of you. And you'll be hearing from me a little more about a COVID response program after we hear CPH's update. So I'm going to call an audible and see if my colleague, Councilmember Remy's microphone is working before I turn it back to our council president. Oh, no. Council President, I guess that's your cue.
Remy, remember that Council President Pro Tem threw you under the bus and just made you sound like the pig again. With that, I want to turn things over. Can you guys still hear me? Okay, I'm going to turn things over to our friend, Director of Public Health at our Public Health Department, Director Johnson. Could you tell us and the viewers at home how COVID-19 is impacting Latinx community? I know this is a source of conversation every day, every other day when you meet with the council members and we're going through the epidemiology report. Could you kind of unpack some of that for the listening audience today?
Absolutely. President Harden, members of council. I was going to say a special thank you to Sandra for pulling us together, but I did want to say a special thank you to Councilmember Remy for reminding us to slow down, to take time and to take stock of the things that we need to be... That's the number, Remy. But thank you for giving us some time to talk about, you know, the really pressing issue of the day, COVID-19. I think if you guys saw today's report out of the state, for the first time in the state of Ohio, we reported over 3,000 overnight cases. That's, that's the all-time high during this pandemic. And it's really concerning and it's really worrying when you couple that with the fact that on our Ohio Public Health Advisory System, that color-coded system, we've never had more counties at Level 3 or red than we have this week. So we know that we're at a critical point in the pandemic. It seems like we always are. But we know that there are steps that need to be taken. And I think for a little bit of good news, we can say that locally, here in Columbus, we're matching a little bit of the leveling off that we saw back in the month of August. After the Fourth of July holiday, Columbus really hit a peak in the pandemic and we faced a turning point. And one thing that we were able to learn was that mitigation really works. After the mayor and council took action to have masks in public spaces, we, 14 days later, we came off of our peak and we bent the curve downward where we started to see fewer cases coming in. Governor moved Last Call in bars and restaurants to 10:00 PM. We saw our cases dip even further. So we know that mitigation works. This is the traditional public health PSA that I just have to put in there. Please, 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 wear your mask, wash your hands, and watch your distance by avoiding crowds when possible. But specifically to the community that we're here gathered to talk about and just talk with today, our Hispanic and Latino community. We know that vast disparities exist in Columbus and Ohio and nationally when it comes to contracting COVID-19 and race and ethnicity. We know that our Hispanic-Latino community is 6% of the city population, yet 13% of the total cases. So they're carrying more than twice the burden of what they should be. But then when we start to look at per 100,000 of population, we know that they're carrying more than three times the burden of the non-Hispanic white community when it comes to contracting COVID-19. And we even see this borne out in geographic data as well, where we have to give special focus and special attention to our 43229 zip code and our 43231 zip code, where we start to see more cases accumulating over time. We know that our Hispanic community carries a special burden outside of the pandemic that other communities do not. When we talk about essential workers, the individuals who care for us and who ensure that our society and our community continues to run and operate in a vibrant and enthusiastic way. And so with that, and with that data presentation, I want to turn it over to President Pro Tem Brown to talk about a really exciting program that we were able to work with her on that I think will be really beneficial and helpful for the community.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I am just continually grateful for the work of Columbus Public Health to help safeguard this community and all our residents who live here. I know how hard you've been working and it probably feels like the longest seven months of your life, but you're saving lives. So as Edward mentioned, the infection rate in Columbus has consistently been around four times higher for Latinx residents and twice as high for Black residents when compared to white residents. It's, it's easy to see the connection between the higher rates of infection and the jobs disproportionately held by people of color. Edward talked through some of that, jobs that largely require in-person work. And they are also the same jobs with lower pay that are least likely to offer any kind of paid time off. So in a COVID-19 economy, the way I've been describing it is that our residents, too many of them, face the kind of double jeopardy of low-wage work. On the one hand, showing up in person exposes them and their families to an increased risk of infection, but not showing up at all means that they can't pay their rent or meet a doctor's bill or afford the costs of their child's medicine. So it's really in our citywide interest for every resident to have access to testing without fear of what will happen to their paychecks if that test comes back positive. Until now, workers in those jobs unable to access sick pay have really had no recourse to provide for themselves or their families if they're required to isolate. And for low-wage earners, a positive COVID-19 test, really just to put it as concretely as possible, it doesn't just foretell a serious health concern, but also possible financial ruin. And I really think we all need to let that sink in. That is the central premise that really motivated this council to act on this issue. There should not be anyone who, at one of the scariest times of their life when it comes to a health diagnosis, also so deeply fears financial ruin. Frankly, happens too often with a lot of chronic illnesses and things are especially stark in COVID-19 because it affects the whole household, given how exposure works. So in response to this reality, council took action this Monday to fund a Right to Recover program in our city in partnership with Columbus Urban League and Our Lady of Guadalupe Center. I really want to thank my colleagues on the call today. We simply would not have been able to budget this work without the help of each of them. Council President Harden, Councilmember Favor, Councilmember Dorance, and Councilmember Remy. If they had not been on board, we would not have been able to fund this work. Right to Recover will offer residents the financial resources they need to take time off and isolate and recover. What it does is it provides wage replacement for that two-week period of isolation. And it replaces wages up to 40 hours a week, $15 per hour, by tapping into $1.21 million of Federal CARES Act funding. Now eligible residents must earn at or below 100%, 150%, excuse me, of the federal poverty line. And the program will be active till the end of the year because of the way the Federal CARES Act dollars are stipulated. We are working, which actually, I will add on that point, CARES Act dollars expire at the end of the year. Right now, the federal government cannot come to the table and negotiate any kind of new stimulus based around COVID, whether that's direct assistance to people or direct assistance to the community. They've failed to do it. The House passed a version of the next stimulus for COVID and President Trump and Mitch McConnell have refused to come to the table. And this is gravely serious. Our, our community is, is, our council, our city is serious about helping people with federal aid, just like this Right to Recover program shows. And if the federal government can't get back to the table to help us do things like that, people pay the price. In addition to all the things that a stimulus bill would need to do, not just help fund action on the, on the community level. But the last thing I'll add is we're really hard at work right now. We just passed this Monday with Urban League and Our Lady of Guadalupe Center to set this up in a way that is easy to access. We do not want barriers for people. We know that many low-income families don't, they're unbanked. They don't have bank accounts. And we want to make sure that this is, that this is something they can get access to without having to further expose anyone and also, you know, stretch themselves beyond their needs and go to a check cashing place are one of those outcomes that would not really be fruitful for anyone. So I will pause there and see, Ramona, I know you have time on the agenda later in your hats, but I thought it was a good idea council president had. If, if you want to jump in on anything, please, please do so. Don't want to put you on the spot, but I appreciate the work that Our Lady of Guadalupe Center is doing with us because the program might be funded by us, but it's not possible to do without trusted community organizations on the ground actually doing the work. So Ramona, open-ended if you'd like, and if not, I'll turn it back to the council.
Thank you, President Pro Tem, Liz Brown. We just want to say thank you. We want to say thank you for the opportunity. We just got off a call about 30 minutes ago with the Urban League and other members to work through the process and the requirements. As you stated, we are making every attempt to make sure that it is easy to access for our community members. And we look forward to finalizing those requirements and in hopes to begin disseminating the funds when possible. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. So for those looking to access the program, you will do so not through the city, but directly through Our Lady of Guadalupe Center and the Urban League. So with that, I'm getting a spinny sign, which means I'm not going to be able to mute. So I'm just going to ask Angie, could you try to mute me as I turn it back to council president?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Thank you to Ms. Ramona Reyes and thank you to Edward for those updates. The program is so important and it's a great way to support folks. And to President Pro Tem's point, we want to make sure that people are not afraid or penalized for checking and getting tested and by making sure that they're able to support themselves with, if they have a COVID diagnosis is critically important. At this point, I am going to turn it over to my friend Sergeant Smith Hughes and Officer Sam James, who serves as our Latino Community Liaison Officer, to talk about public safety in the community during this time. Sergeant?
Hey, good evening, everyone. So just really want to thank you all for allowing us to have this opportunity to be here. I really am on to just continue to support our Latino community. Officer James is our new Hispanic CLO. Got a chance to meet a lot of Latinx community through Capecito on El Sheriff the other day, which was a great opportunity. But again, I just want to give kind of the floor to Sam because he's going to, he's kind of new to the game. But we definitely want him to be involved and I will be with him the entire time. So thank you all for that.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, President Harding and Sergeant Smith Hughes. Sandra, gran trabajo. Gracias por todo. Gracias por tenerme aquí. As you already know, I'm the new officer assigned to diversity inclusion for the Latino community. And as part of that role, I go around to different events and basically make it a point to meet with the Latino community, address any concerns they may have, communicate those back to the division. As I'm sitting here, I'm seeing some familiar faces, a lot of new faces, and I'm getting to see what all of you had to bring to the table, which is great because, you know, we focus on public safety, but, you know, public health. Every event that I go to, I find someone from there. It seems like, you know, Yolanda Blanco, Catherine Swidersky, Svid, everywhere I go, the Department of Public Health is there. And I really appreciate that, and especially since you're giving so much attention to the Latino community and the fact that everybody's taking their time to, to come together. And this is my first time being part of this. I do miss or did miss the Latino Festival this year. My brother and I are usually the ones playing instruments at the end of the festival with the Latino community members. And it's great to see people from our communities coming together and celebrating our heritage. Unfortunately, that was not available this year, but I'd rather have this than nothing at all. It still shows that solidarity coming through. So as, as you already know, if you have someone, an event, an issue in the Latino community that could use a Spanish speaker from our side to attend, please reach out to me. Anyone who wants my information, just let me know and I'll pass it along. But that's pretty much it. I'm here to facilitate communication between the division and the community in any capacity, be it as a translator, be it to try and facilitate, basically, a complaint because of a language barrier. If I can be of assistance, please reach out. I'm here and I can take any questions you may have or suggestions you may have as well. Thank you.
Can I, can I have one more thing?
Please.
Add also that we are here to network as well. So we want to make sure that we're putting people in contact with those services as needed as well. So we do serve as a conduit for that. Again, and we're recruiters. Get that, you know, there is the opportunity for individuals to join the police department. We want to make sure that is noted as well. So, but again, gracias por todo. Thank you all for letting us be here and we definitely will be around to help with everything moving forward.
Thank you both. I mean, I think everybody on this, on this call, on this town hall knows the importance of representation, that it matters. And to see both of you representing our communities is so critically important for, for trust in law enforcement, for making those connections, for just keeping us actually safe and to your point, the translation services, the connections, hearing directly from the community. So we appreciate both of you for the work that you're doing.
No, I was just going to say, Council President Harden, that we had a meeting with Chief Quinlan at the beginning of the year with members from the community. Having a Latino CLO is something that we have been asking for a long time. So, you know, Officer James being here is, you know, in response to that request. And Sergeant Smith Hughes, as you can tell, is also fully bilingual and has also helped a lot to bridge the gap between communities and the divisions. So thank you to Chief Quinlan because he also allowed, we had a conversation similar to this where he was able to hear directly from the community the different concerns that they are facing here in Columbus. So I just wanted to add that as well.
Thank you for that acknowledgement. With that, if you don't mind, I'm going to go a bit out of order. I'd like to hear some reactions from Director Liliana Kavano from the Ohio Latino Affairs Commission, as well as in here, just what she's been hearing is the state of the Hispanic community in our community.
Thank you so much, and I am very excited to have the opportunity to share tonight with you. Buenas noches, President Harden and President Pro Tem Brown and council members. Indeed, this has been the most crazy, wild seven months of my life. I must say that it has been a time of test for our entire community. We know that central Ohio is vibrant and it is so because of our immigrants, our migrants, and our ethnic minorities, who are really the engines of the progress that we are experiencing. And we know that with us over 60,000 Latinos in the city of Columbus and a good number of us dispersed in the county, there is a lot for us to contribute. But at this precise time, there is just a lot of stress and a lot of worry. And I think in closing Hispanic Heritage Month, it's important to just touch on a few points. We know that we are, and we mentioned this throughout the conversation, you know, we are a magnet for culture and we are an economic engine and we have social contributions that we're providing to our city and state. But the reality is that right now, the challenges are too many and they have been exacerbated and uncovered by the pandemic. Over the last seven months, I've worked very closely with Governor Dwyane's team and the city of Columbus and the county trying to respond to the pandemic. And it has indeed been a very difficult job, not by lack of effort, but by lack of infrastructure and support systems that really answer to the needs of our new American communities. The worst thing that we have is that we know, as it was stated earlier, many of our families have lost loved ones. Many of them have lost their jobs. And about 20% of immigrants in Ohio, according to recent statistics, were said to experience poverty, but we know that that percentage has increased tremendously. We know that national data is showing us that Latinas are most affected by unemployment at a rate of 1 in 5 Hispanic women. And let that sink for a moment. 1 in 5 Hispanic women are now unemployed because the hardest-hit sectors of the economy are often dominated by women, particularly Latinas in retail and healthcare. And again, because when many of us are essential workers and you need to decide who is going to be able to stay back home with children and taking care, where usually the mom is the one that stays back. Another major problem that we are seeing is the families are impacted tremendously. We know that many of our parents are essential workers and their children are expected to learn virtually or in a hybrid mode. or in a hybrid mode. However, we haven't talked so much about the digital divide. And so suddenly, our families are being faced with major decisions in the midst of very serious personal losses when we are facing a national scenario where conversations about the political environment and the civil rights environments are very tense. So many of our young adults who have deferred action for childhood arrivals, DACA, are extremely worried about their situation. Those that do have access to healthcare are very concerned about what is going to happen next. So in overall terms, everything is affecting our existence. But if there is something that is very important about our foundation of who we are as a people is that we thrive. And challenges are opportunities for us to make a difference and to continue to move forward. So we are extremely grateful for the support that we have received from this council, from the city, and from the state of Ohio government to continue forward. In fact, more Latinos than ever are volunteering to be poll workers in the upcoming election, to participate in the elections, to complete their ballots ahead of time. They are working hard to complete the census, and they're figuring out that, you know, the termination plus collaboration is what is going to get us out of the situation where we are. So overall, although there is a lot of stress and anguish, there is also a lot of hope. And I believe that our community has a sense of humility, and we know that we can move forward believing in the American dream and knowing that our heritage as Latinos, as Hispanics, and that desire and that determination to excel will carry us forward in collaboration with each one of you. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Liana. Just that point about the community thriving even through adversity, I think it's a message for leadership. I just want to pause and open it up, see if my colleagues have any questions or comments. We've heard from several, a couple of different speakers. I thought this was a good point to open it up to council members. Any feedback or any... Certainly, okay. We, if not, we are going to jump back now to Mr. Thornhill. Nathan, thank you for being with us. Could you talk a bit about Hispanic Heritage Month and what it means to the community from your perspective?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Council President Harding. I'd like to start with general information. Hispanic Heritage Month actually started as Hispanic Heritage Week in 1968 under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was later expanded to an entire month by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period. As we know, starts September 15th and ends October 15th. This month was and is intended to celebrate the narratives, contributions, and achievements of Latinx people across the United States. But what does Hispanic Heritage Month mean in Ohio? Myself is a proud Ohioan. Born and raised in Xenia to a Puerto Rican mother, my household was one of few Spanish-speaking households in the entire town. I honestly don't recall anyone in the early 1990s in Xenia, Ohio, being proud or openly proud to be Latino. Once you left your home, you essentially assimilated according to the color of your skin, which would effectively mute your culture in exchange for amorphous terms like Hispanic non-black or white non-Hispanic. Anyone remotely familiar with the beautiful diversity throughout Central and South America and the Caribbean, however, is equipped to understand that there are plethora of cultures that thrive in these areas, and many of their descendants are here in Central Ohio. They may speak Spanish. They may also speak one of various indigenous languages that predate the arrival of Columbus to the Americas, such as Nahuatl spoken throughout Mexico, or Quechua spoken through various parts of South America, such as Peru, Brazil, Bolivia, Argentina, Ecuador, Colombia. And I can't not mention Taínó, which is fused into the very name of people who come from my maternal homeland of Puerto Rico, Boricua. As an educator, I enjoy traveling to these places in order to better understand our collective humanity and bring resources from my classroom here in Columbus, Ohio. I love teaching about Spanish language and culture because exploring this grand diversity of language and culture allows us to also explore an unlimited amount of potential connections between the diverse cultures of my students here in Columbus, Ohio, allowing us to build community and intercultural understanding. We live amongst each other here in Central Ohio. Therefore, we all collectively contribute to, sometimes suffer from, and help alleviate societal issues that affect us all. As previously mentioned, COVID-19 has been an incredibly tumultuous reminder of that. Hispanic Heritage Month in 2020, to me, is a prerequisite. To what, one may ask? To Latinx being normal, which the numbers honestly already demonstrate. As of 2019, Latinx is the second-largest racial or ethnic group in the entire United States. We're not exotic, nor are we simply a political talking point. We're humans with the same intrinsic appreciation for being valued. Celebrating the beautiful diversity of our language and heritage is an essential opportunity to also celebrate and see our humanity. Because when you see my humanity and I see yours, we can't help but be connected, empowered to collaborate. Then and only then can we collectively differentiate between emotionally charged rhetoric and reality. I wish everyone a happy Hispanic Heritage Month, and thank you so much for having me.
Man, maybe we should have started with you. What a way to really set the foundation and the why we're here, what we're talking about. Thank you, Nathan. For folks who know, you know, your mentorship and what you're doing, Lyndon and the community is much appreciated by this council and by the community. So just appreciate you, man, for being a part of the conversation this evening.
Thanks.
At this point, so next we're going to hear from two champions for our young people, Director Rose and then Michael from Ohio State. They'll both be talking about how our kids and how our college students are doing during this time. Director Rose, would you kick us off?
Thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. And thank you, Nathan, for that explanation. And thank you, Lily, for the amazing information you provided. Thank you, council member, President Mr. Harding. My name is Jahaira Rose, and I run a nonprofit called Project Mariposas. And I also represent Martin de Porte Center, which is part of the Dominican Sisters of Peace. And it is an outreach center offering programs for the Latinx youth and families. Thank you, Sandra, for inviting us to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month today. So for the past nine years, I have been fortunate to work with the Latinx community, especially with the girls and women through Project Mariposas. Our mission is really to empower mentor and support Latina women and girls with tools, knowledge, and leadership skills to lead brave and strong lives. We currently serve over 80 families a year through programming, support, and connections. Our youth represent ages of 7 to 18, some of them younger through the siblings, and we serve closer to 20 zip codes between Columbus and nearby areas. Our services include programming through mentoring, summer camps, school readiness, leadership program. And we also ensure that we're serving the family by providing information or a connection to another of the many resources in our community. This last year, as many organizations, as schools have mentioned, it has been difficult. The COVID pandemic did bring new challenges, new ways to be creative, and new ways to create partnership. As I look around this panelist list in this call, I am very proud to say that we have been able to collaborate and partner at some level with each of the agencies or individuals that are represented here in this call and many others. So President Harding, as I mentioned, we have faced many challenges. This year, we have seen the ups and downs of our youth mental health. Through our programs, we try to be present in their lives, which is extremely important, as well as Nathan mentioned. So they know that they have a resource, they have a contact, and they have a community. In our culture, family is extremely important. And in this year, our youth have had to experience illness, death of family members, cut of wages, loss of work, food insecurities, education uncertainty, discrimination, financial harshness, immigration changes, uncertainty, and fear all around. So, but yes, many families are experiencing this. However, when an undocumented family has experienced three or more of the things that I just mentioned, it really impacts the overall progress of that family and the youth that we serve. We have seen some of the effects in their school, their engagement with organizations, and their own behavior. We have already worked with many families to help navigate some of these challenges, and we will continue. So I'm looking forward to work with Ramona on the Right to Recover program. I'm really looking forward to that. And thanks to reorganizations in this panel, and many organizations that are listening to this call right now, we're able to continue providing services to our families. So as an organization, we're committed to help our families and be present. We do need more resources, as many organizations do, to help our youth thrive in these very challenging times. I do thank you for taking the time to listen to our Latino community today. And I'm really optimistic that these conversations are not going to stay here, and we will continue these conversations beyond this forum so we can continue creating spaces for our youth and our families. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Rose. I'm excited to hear from Michael to talk about his perspective, what he's hearing from or your folks at Ohio State, what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, President Harding, esteemed members of the Columbus City Council for both your time and thoughtful consideration. And a special thank you to Sandra and my fellow speakers for your effort and your energy in the work that you each do. Please allow me to introduce myself. I am Michael Bustamante. I serve as the Latinx Student Success Program Coordinator within the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, ODI, at the Ohio State University. And in my role, I direct the Latinx Student Success Team as we cultivate and support the Latinx Baka'i community for personal, cultural, academic, and professional achievement. Through high-impact programming and collaboration, the LSS team promotes full inclusion of Latinx students. We seek to raise the visibility of Latinx groups on campus, and we ultimately serve the student, staff, and faculty of the Ohio State Latinx community. From these mediaized images and videos of police violence and brutality that fuel the Black Lives Matter movement and moment to the highly anticipated presidential election to be held on November 3, 2020, this team has been a challenge for us all. Compounding this reality, my students are also learning to navigate this new online virtual world, an environment filled with endless online classes and infinite Zoom meetings. A virtual world necessitated by COVID-19, a global pandemic that has disproportionately impacted Black and Brown communities across our country. And this still doesn't even take into account personal, family, work, and other commitments that students typically manage during the school year. My students, like myself, like fellow faculty and staff on campus, and like you, are struggling. Lack of motivation, difficulty concentrating, negative mental health impacts like increased anxiety and depression, sleepless nights, and more. Every month, I host a large group meeting with my students where we have an open discussion, a Latinx town hall, if you will. And in these meetings, I learned that despite these challenges, my students are facing this crisis with resolve and resilience. My students are leaders on campus. They serve on numerous executive boards of student organizations. They are conducting research and will soon publish. They are getting admitted into professional programs like a doctorate of psychology. They are our future architects, medical doctors, accountants, veterinarians, and elected officials. They are navigating their first or final year at Ohio State as best they can. And this is why the work that I do, the work that the Latinx Student Success Team does, the work that the Office of Diversity and Inclusion does, the work that we all do, is important now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Again, I'm going to pause and just check and see if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments. We've had a couple more really good presentations. Well, thank you to Director Rose and to Michael. It is critically important that we, as a community, really work, to your point, Michael, about the skill set of the young Latino community at Ohio State. What are we doing as a city, as a community, to make sure that we keep that talent and that diversity here in Columbus? I think that that's a challenge that should be on the shoulders of all of us right now. At this point, I want to turn the floor over to Claudia DeLeon from the Hispanic Chamber to talk about the small business community and not, you know, as pertaining to this year and COVID, but just in general. So Claudia, would you take it away?
Sure. Thank you so much again for the invite, Sandra. Thank you for having this representation here. As you guys have already mentioned, this has been an interesting Hispanic Heritage Month for us from both the chamber perspective and also from my day-to-day job, which is basically event promotion, mainly because there hasn't been any physical events that have been going on, you know, that are massive. And so it's definitely been challenging, but it's also allowed us to see or to accelerate helping with some of the challenges that a lot of the business community faces. So with the Hispanic Chamber, we've got right around 160 members. The majority of the members... We've got three types of members. So we've got individual members, corporate members, and small businesses. Over the, you know, the course of COVID, particularly this year, obviously, the individual members have reached out to us a lot for processes, mostly for filing for unemployment, but also resources for those that didn't initially qualify and then orientation for those that qualified as new resources became available, like the PUA for 1099s. Corporate has been more seeking our help most recently when it comes to employment because, you know, for a while, everybody was out of employment, and now people need employees, particularly warehouses. And as businesses start opening up again, you know, there is that need for workforce, and we've been reached out a lot for that. But the majority of our efforts have gone towards small businesses where we've had to collaborate with ESBA for anything involving education. So the resources, training, access to funds, getting help with things like the PPP and the idle loans. And in this process, what we have found, some of the challenges, is that there is very little knowledge with anything that has to do with digital within the Hispanic community in general, but definitely the small business community. And during Hispanic Heritage Month, you know, one of the events that we ended up having to do as a chamber this year that we had never done before was a Hispanic Restaurant Week, which we mostly did in order to help some of these restaurants that had been affected and that were not necessarily set up, even at the beginning, for things like delivery or carryout because they just weren't used to it or they didn't have the resources or the education to realize how to do it. And this is an event that's going on now, and I will do the shameless plug in case you guys are interested. The website is hola, hola, restaurantweek.com. But you'll see that a lot of the mostly small, local restaurants joined this effort that was completely sponsored, so nobody had to pay anything. We're also doing all the media for it completely free just because we were trying to get these businesses to be more like the general market businesses[1706.40] so that they could survive. Because we have found that, you know, a lot of businesses were struggling, and a lot of the people that reached out to us didn't even apply for things that they did qualify for because they had no idea that the resources were available. And Sandra has been great help in providing access to those resources and mainly to putting us in touch with individuals that have allowed us to provide education, as has been Lily, who, in partnership with La Mega Media, you know, we ended up doing interviews throughout the whole three or four months that, you know, that quarantine was more active or in place for the community as a whole, just to provide this education. So some of the challenges that we face mainly have to do around, you know, education and access to resources. And particularly when it comes to COVID, when a lot of the working class within our community has, was mostly exposed because a lot of the times, you know, we didn't necessarily have the ability of working from home because of the type of jobs. And so there was, you know, a lot of possibility of infection. And in the cases where that came up positive, there just wasn't a lot of knowledge as to what to do, how to deal with it. You've got a lot of households that have three generations living in the same household, where you've got the smaller kids to the older kids. And these are the type of things that the community was looking to us for. So as, you know, as we have gone through this process and particularly around Hispanic Heritage Month, because this is where we're highlighting a lot of the individuals, a lot of the businesses, and we're kind of being forced to go out and talk to everyone. You know, we're getting this feedback, and that is probably where we see that there is the most amount of need, is getting the word out to the community and getting, not that the resources don't exist, because we know that they're there. And we, you know, all of us that are here probably are familiar with how to access them, but it's getting the word out to the general community. And because the Hispanic community in central Ohio has created its own ecosystem, the communication via those small businesses is extremely important because that's really how it gets out to the community as a whole. So just in general, and I know that that was one of the topics that I was told to talk about, was some of the challenges that are being faced specifically now, you know, around or after COVID. Those are the ones that, you know, we can identify the most. I think as an organization, and, you know, we're trying to do as much as we can to get the word out, but we definitely feel that it's important that we do collaborate more as a group. And so I do appreciate what all of us are doing and what all of you guys in your different positions are doing. And, you know, we're here to help if, you know, anything is needed.
Thank you, Claudia. I'm putting on my small minority business hat. We work really, we're really glad that we were able to get out, you know, nearly $9 million to the minority and women-owned businesses through using our CARES Act dollars. And I think that that's all good, and I think it probably did help a little, help folks get to this point. But we know that COVID is still impacting businesses today and will be for seven more months. And so are we able to articulate? Because I think our next step is to continue to talk to the federal government about the continual need for support for minority-owned businesses, for small businesses over the next, say, six months. So are we able to track the existing need post the first infusion of resources? And to your point, some folks didn't even get that.
So from the feedback that we have received, I don't believe that a lot of the Hispanic community was quick enough, I guess, to be able to apply and do what was needed because they didn't know how. So, you know, if there is a possibility for more resources or more funds to be available, I do think that even us, and I don't speak just on my behalf, but I'm sure that some of the other people in this, in this room, and I'm looking specifically, you know, at Sandra, at Ramona, that I know are very, also very much connected. I think that we are now prepared to do a better job of getting that information out as soon as we know that it's available. Because it, I think that it was just getting access to the information. Like I said, it's not that the funds weren't there or that the city wasn't doing what it needed to do. It was how do we get that information out to the community? And then once they know about it, how do we help them actually apply? And I know with Sandra, there was the county funds that, you know, originally, you know, we did our best to try to get it out to the community. But then, once the business owners knew about it, like, oh, this is great. You know, I could apply for a $20,000 loan or a $10,000 grant, but I have no idea how to do it, you know? And then the second time, you know, that it was extended, we actually talked to Talia from the SBA, who was able to partner with some of these business owners to be able to get them to qualify and apply. So I think it's more of a matter of how we get the information out and then the resources that are available to help people actually go through the necessary steps, you know, understanding that there might be a language barrier, that there might be, you know, maybe not access to even a computer because a lot of these business owners work from their cell phones. They don't have a printer. They don't, you know, that's not how they're doing business, unfortunately. But it's not so much that the resources aren't there. It's, or even at this point, that we don't know about it, is how do we get the information out to the business owners? And then how do we help them go through all the steps so that they can apply, qualify, et cetera?
Council President, if I may add, trust is also an issue for many people in the community, especially because in the middle of the pandemic, there was a lot of information coming through from a lot of different directions. So there will be maybe a bogus link that says, hey, get $10,000 today for your business, and it's actually someone trying to get your personal information. So we know that there was a lot of that going on. So trust is important. Who is communicating? Who's delivering the information? You may be someone from the city, but if I never seen you over here before, and now you have this packet for me, like, what am I supposed to do with it? We were able to partner with the Hispanic Chamber, City Council, and Columbus Public Health to put together packets of information. We're doing drive-through resource fair for small businesses. We just did one on Saturday in the Northland area. We're going to be at Our Lady of Guadalupe this Friday morning. And then next Wednesday, we're going to be at Columbus Public Health to cover the east and south side businesses. So people can just drive by, get COVID resources, PPE and PPP information as well. They don't have to touch anyone. But we are doing that because we know also that a small business owner is busy and they may not have the time to take a class or log into a program or whatnot. So we're trying to come closer to them to provide that information from people that they know and trust.
And to Sandra's point, and this is, we actually, the Hispanic Chamber partnered with One Columbus in Jobs, Ohio to deliver COVID care packs to business owners. But because the Chamber is 100% volunteer, we don't have a staff, we actually then partnered with La Mega Media to get their sales force to go out and deliver these care packs. And I thought it was interesting because as, you know, these sales reps were going to these businesses, they're like, what are you trying to get? Why are you giving me this? Do I have to pay for it? Like, you know, oh, my God, what, are you going to try to sell me something? And there was a lot of, you know, I guess, they just didn't want to get it. And, you know, and this is people that they knew. They're like, okay, I'm going to take it because I know you and I trust you, but I don't know if I should be, what's in this box, you know? And it's like, we're just trying to help. And we're literally just giving you this because we want to help your business. But I think that that part is very much true. And it is very hard for somebody random to try to educate or even just give something for free to some of these business owners because there is that trust issue. So I think that those of, you know, those of us that are here and some of the partners that we work with, you know, have done a better job of showing that we have good intentions to the community and generating that trust. But there definitely still needs some work to be done on that end.
If I may add, I have personally fielded several questions around this topic where people get calls or emails concerning benefits that they're skeptical about. And they're just very reluctant to accept them. And I personally did not know about these programs that you're referring to. So I wasn't able to say, oh, that's legit. Go with it and help your business, help your family. So if we can try and work to establish a pipeline of communication so that when we do field those calls, we're able to say, yes, this sounds like the program we just spoke about, and we can help them take the next steps, even if it is calling somebody else to verify that it is, in fact, coming from, from the government and it's a legit program, that they don't pass up on something that's there to help them.
No, thank you, Officer James. I couldn't agree more. I think that this is a real opportunity as we continue to move forward to strengthen these relationships and make sure that we are being, you know, that much more thoughtful. Because you're right, Claudia, credible communicators, and Sandra is critical. We know that for every community. Having that credible communicator is absolutely critical to getting services to the folks who are most in need. But thank you. If that's all right, I'm going to throw it over to our, like, our last presenter, our speaker, Ms. Ramona Reyes. She kind of already hit on some of the, I was just going to ask kind of an audible question. I wonder if you could talk to us, the conversation now is about how to come back safely. I wondered if you had any comments or info on your thoughts on coming back to school safely.
Okay, President Harding, you're trying to make this hard for me, huh? So that's okay. Thank you, President Harding. I will, I can start there. So as we've announced that we will be proceeding in a hybrid model, but not only Columbus City Schools, as you all have heard, there are other districts, Gehanna, Dublin, other districts that are either going in a hybrid model or a full hybrid model. It is a difficult time for school districts, school boards, students, teachers, community members to make those decisions. As you know, we have inequities within our communities that exist from an educational perspective. Having children in a all-virtual environment has not proven to be as effective as having in-person education. So we are seeing a lag from a lot of our students. We are seeing a lag from responses for our parents. Our parents are having to do double duty. Parents, our children are struggling, especially some of our children that have special needs or need additional IEPs. So it's a catch-22. Obviously, our schools are doing the best with the CDC guidelines to ensure that there's a safe return, providing the PPE, providing the cleaning solutions, social distancing, communicating the need for how we're going to do lunch, how possibly the teachers are rotating versus the students. What I encourage parents to do, depending on which school district you are in, is to really continue to reach out and look at all the engagement and communications from their districts, reach out to their principals and their teachers to get more verification on how to bring their child back to school. If they fear or are uncomfortable, it's best to reach out now to see if there are other solutions or other ways that they can ensure the safe return for their child where they can have a peace of mind. Many districts still have the hybrid model, I mean, the virtual model, so they might still have access to that. So I do encourage, I know sometimes people get very scared. They feel that school districts, superintendents, board members are these entities, elected officials are these entities that you can't reach out to. But a lot of times, if we don't know what your issue is, then we don't know how to address it. So that would be my two cents on the education piece. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah, critical information for us right now. So I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you. I would love the opportunity to share some of the work that Our Lady Guadalupe Center, to our police officer's point. But I do want to start with thanking you, President Harding, council members, and Sandra Lopez for the opportunity to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month with you and share a little bit about the work of Our Lady Guadalupe Center, which is a program at Catholic Social Services. So we work to strengthen immigrant Hispanic families so they can participate and give back to their communities. The center offers English-as-a-second-language classes, citizenship readiness classes, onsite wellness checks and referrals, community events, case management, and legal assistance to our clients. We believe it is only when all people have the opportunity to reach their potential and contribute their strength that Columbus will truly be a healthy, vibrant community where all people can thrive. Through programs and services, Our Lady Guadalupe provides a welcoming environment, which to build community, strengthen family, improve economic status, and promote health and well-being. We remain committed to providing the highest quality of services to our clients. So as we were talking about COVID, a couple recently impacted by COVID fell behind on their rent. Their landlord had access to their apartment, and they proceeded to remove their front door and replace it with a piece of plywood. Our client called us for help. We were able to determine that they were eligible for some rental assistance. So we reached out to the landlord to let them know that they were approved and that a check would be mailed to him. And we asked him to stop the eviction, and he agreed. The following week, our client was very skeptical. So they decided to attend the court eviction session, realizing that the landlord had not canceled the court date. Fortunately, she was able to show the judge our note and promise of payment. So the judge stopped the eviction and reprimanded the landlord. If it weren't for the grants that we have received, that would not have been a happy story. So as previously mentioned by President Pro Tem Brown, many Hispanics were the first to lose their jobs and are the last to be rehired. Many work multiple jobs. They lack benefits and worker protections. Emergency assistance for people impacted with COVID, yes. There is a lot of assistance out there. But each grant has eligibility requirements. We try to walk through those requirements with each client to ensure that the assistance does not have a negative impact on them. Grants like their right to work that will help offer residents the financial resources they need to take the time off work to isolate and recover in order to return to the workforce and mitigate the risk of spread in COVID-19. We've also been fortunate to look and receive some city cares and resilience emergency assistance funds from Franklin County. These grants are specific to assisting with rent and utilities. We do have some limited funding to assist Columbus Hispanic residents with other emergency needs. I stated before, there are eligibility and requirements for each of these. I just also want to highlight that and remind everybody that we started as a food pantry. So we continue to serve our clients in a no-touch food pantry. And recently, we've actually reached out to a local produce and are purchasing Latino produce. So we are, we have our Maduros and our Chiles and our Yucca and some of our other products that are not readily available through Middle Ohio Food Bank. So we know that our families are looking for those items that are also healthy, but are fresh produce. So we're encouraging many of our Hispanics who, before COVID, probably were not seeking out food or food pantries. But due to COVID, they have found themselves in those financial situations that now there is a need to attend food pantries. We have case management with a master social worker, and she's helping individuals with Medicare, Medicaid, Social Security, unemployment, any other benefit questions. She directs them. If we can't answer your question, we will attempt to refer you to the appropriate resources. From a legal perspective, we recently were awarded the grant from the Ohio Supreme Court, which is money that's available to hire an attorney that will be onsite providing actual pro bono representation. That is the result of some of the work and funding that we received from the council that President Pro Tem mentioned earlier, where we were helping and having pro bono lawyers at the center. We also today actually sponsored the Ohio Legal Bus. So we have a bus that comes to the center and provides free consultations. We have pro bonos, lawyers who are also available. As mentioned prior by Sandra and by Claudia DeLeon, we are working with the Small Business Administration for an event this Saturday where individual business owners will be provided COVID-19 signs in Spanish, resource books in Spanish, brief explanations of the resources available by the Small Business Administration, contact information, and information from the Department, the Columbus Public Health. I want to continue to encourage those of you who are Spanish speakers and need to learn English. We have a partnership with the Dominican Learning Center and offer English classes. And for those of you online who know poquito español and you want to practice and you want to practice and help our ESL Spanish speakers continue to learn, we have an English-Spanish conversation class on Saturdays if you'd like to attend. All of this is Zoom. It's via Zoom, and slowly, we're bringing it back into the center. But as everybody else, we are also being COVID responsible and making sure we follow CDC guidelines. We continue with our citizenship classes, and we do have some limited application assistance. So even with all these programs, there is still a lot to be done to help Hispanic and Hispanic immigrants. There are resources needed in mental health, affordable legal immigration assistance, affordable housing, worker protections, and access to medical resources. We need to find a way to centralize information for Latinos and New Americans, especially for access to city and county resources. I'm grateful to all of our Hispanic leaders and Hispanic-focused organizations. I'm grateful to all of our Hispanic leaders and Hispanic-focused organizations and champions. I appreciate our council for your continued acknowledgement of the needs of our community and your openness to work with us to help our wonderful, colorful, joyful Hispanic community.
That, we kind of know, I think, folks hear about while we're facing all the time, but to have you run through the depth of the work that you're doing, it's really appreciated. I mean, it's saving lives, keeping roofs over our residents' heads, it's feeding folks. The most critical needs are being met and just say thank you. We've had a lot of conversations. I was gonna turn it right over to you, President Protam. Would you just go ahead and kick us off in your thoughts and closing questions?
Oh, sure. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to take the mic too long or, okay. Well, I, are you saying you want me to close out? I'm sorry, there are loud, small people in the background. Well, I thank you to everyone. Every single presentation was powerful. And, you know, Ramona, you talked about the services that Our Lady of Guadalupe provides on a 365-day-a-year basis. And I just think it's a good reminder for all of us that we are so COVID-focused right now for obvious reasons. But there are a lot of things that residents across our city are facing and have been facing and battling for years. And when I think about the services at the Guadalupe Center, and I really think your legal services have helped save lives because our Latinx community has been up against some pretty unprecedented levels of targeting in these last three to four years. Although I know that the picture for undocumented people is very hard for them to. But without services like Our Lady of Guadalupe being there in the community, helping people understand what their recourse is and what their rights are, it would be so much more of a challenge. So I appreciate that reminder, too. And then, I also personally am really activated around some of the remarks that Ms. Liliana Kavanaugh made about our Latinas being hit. I'm sorry, it's so loud. I'm gonna wrap this up to put everyone out of their misery. But the Latinas are facing the highest unemployment rate across all demographics. And when, when any community is hit hardest, we have to focus on it, and it's a challenge. But when women are hit hardest, and I think Forbes called this downturn, the first female recession, because women have borne the brunt of these layoffs, that hits families, and that hits kids. And kids are already struggling in this new environment between school, online, and everything they're navigating. So we have to pay attention to this. I look forward to the partnership of everyone on this town hall to, hey, guys, on this town hall, to continue the focus on our Latinx community in general, but particularly Latinas, who the recovery will be slower for those who are hit the first and worst. So anyway, thank you, Council President, and all of the guests tonight. This was amazing, and I learned so much. And each of you is powerful, and I appreciate being in your, in your presence.
It's amazing to see women leaders because they show us all how to juggle, and it's an amazing thing to see. I'm gonna throw it over to our council member, Rob Dorns, for closing remarks.
Thanks, President Harding. I just want to say to everyone here, thank you for the work that you've already done. The work is going to obviously continue, and I think one of the things that a lot of folks and I talked about is those lessons learned that we, that we've learned as we've dealt with, with COVID, and certainly the economic aspect of the things that so many business owners and so many entrepreneurs in our community have dealt with. I don't want anyone on this call to be shy about those lessons learned to, whether it's city council or other leaders within our community, to make sure that, you know, as we continue to progress, whether it's through the pandemic or the recovery, that we take those lessons learned and do our work even better. So thank you for, for doing, doing that and being sure to give us your counsel and time. And certainly, thank you to Sandra Lopez for her work at council to make sure that, one, this event happened, but also to have the pulse of this community to make sure that when we're making decisions, we have this community in mind. And Sandra, you're an indispensable part of our team and part of the community to make sure that we can do this work better. So appreciate everyone being here tonight, and the work continues.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorns. Are we gonna give it a try?
Is it for levity?
We can.
It works.
I used my phone and was able to listen. It was certainly enlightening to hear and certainly has not lost, Claudia, what you were saying about, you know, the impact that we need to reach further into your community, into the Latino community. We got to make sure that we overcome, you know, those, those areas that were mentioned, like distrust and, and certain things. Because the programs that we outlined for COVID in particular were very much, you know, if we had our dream, it would have went right into your community, and we could do better in that regard. So the minute that we have additional resources to put towards businesses that are in need, we certainly will do so. At this point, you know, we, we realize that until Congress acts and they provide us with additional resources, we're in the, we're kind of at their, we're at their mercy at the moment. But, but next time around, we'll make sure that we're working very closely with people like Michael that was on and certainly making sure that we're reaching out in all directions so that, that everyone can take, take advantage of those resources. Thank you so much for, all of you, for your commitment to making us understand better and helping us to be, feel a part of your community. It's very important. And thank you to Sandra. We know that her work is invaluable to us on council. And so, in many communities, not just the Latino community, but certainly particularly in the Latino community, we appreciate the work that she does and make sure that we know exactly how all of you all feel, and we can make sure that we're representing you very fairly and equitably. So this was a great session. Appreciate the opportunity. Very happy I could speak finally. And, and certainly, this is just the beginning of these conversations. We, we are always open and certainly want to hear from all of you when there are concerns, questions, solutions that you can provide. We're here. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorns, or Remy. Because Sandra put so much work into tonight's meeting. Do you have any closing remarks, Sandra, before I?
First, I have a question for you because Kenya Ramirez from Channel 4 is attending, and maybe she wanted to ask a question. So I don't know if Angela is listening, if Ms. Andrew's listening, if she can unmute Kenya Ramirez, that would be great. So I don't know. If not, I will make sure to connect her with you, Council President Harding.
Certainly. Let's keep from media. How about we do a follow-up, and I'd be happy to have that conversation.
So I will, I will do that. I wanted to just say muchas gracias to everyone who participated. I know it was a bit rushed and maybe, you know, last minute, but this is, this is the village. And we come together, and we support each other. Thank you, Michael, who didn't know me, but was referred to me by Dr. Moore and Grace Johnson so graciously for joining us today, and to everyone for everything that you do every day to support the Latinx community here in Columbus. I'm just so proud to serve alongside all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The breadth of conversation tonight is really, really thoughtful and powerful. So thank you for bringing the community together to talk about COVID, but just also all the different opportunities and issues that we, we face. You know, what I think is especially important to remember this evening is that while Columbus is a beautiful and diverse community, we still have so much work ahead of us to ensure that every family in every neighborhood feels safe. And it's raising these conversations and continuing our partnerships that are gonna allow us to make clear change. And so, we got to continue looking directly at the many disparities in our community across race and class and not let up. And, and know that we work shoulder to shoulder to make sure that every one of our, our neighbors and residents feel a part of the success of Columbus. So proud to be a partner, proud to be council member and council president, but not afraid to say that we've got a lot of work ahead of us. Thank you all. I do, I got a text from Edward Johnson in his presentation earlier about COVID and COVID testing. He said he forgot to give the number to how you can get tested for COVID if you have symptoms or if you would like to get tested for free. That number is 614-645-1519. Stay safe and stay healthy, and hope everyone had a blessed Hispanic Heritage Month. Take care.
Thanks, everyone. Buenos noches.
Gracias, buenas noches.